Meeting with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We'll start with, I'll never want to prove the agenda, any additions, revisions, or corrections. Teresa?
No.
Nope. Dan?
Nope.
Nope. Good, alright. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as, alright, I have one thing, we're gonna move public forum ahead of the visitors, so that way the two people we have here for input tonight can give us their input and they don't have to sit through the whole next part of the discussion, so. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Doug. Thanks Doug, on favor said aye.
Aye.
Close sign, motion carries. Consent agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Thanks Doug, you have a second?
Second.
On favor said aye.
Aye.
Close sign, motion carries. On the public forum, okay, we have two speakers tonight, so if you haven't been in before, what we have you do is have you come up with the William, state your name and address for the record, then just share with us what your concerns are, and then we'll take that into consideration and we'll get together some minutes, somebody will get back to you with the answers on that. Okay, so Sandy, you wanna go first?
Sure.
You don't have to, I think, of course.
Well, we kinda came together, we live at the same address.
Okay.
You can come up with it.
My name is Nadia Corey, and I live at 608 Second Avenue Northeast, here in Cassin.
Okay, and you wanted to talk to us about?
Um, oh, probably a couple months ago, we had our hot water heater go out, and our main shut off, and the house started leaking. Well, we had to wait until it was, city was open, whatever, to get our water shut off inside the house, outside the house. Well, when we called, they actually had an attitude with us, like, oh, we only got two people working, we'll be in there like four hours, as our basement had flooded throughout the night. Finally, after he had called them again, it was like, look, it's flooding, we need somebody to come and shut it off. Well, when they finally decided to come and shut it off, the guy broke the valve outside, and kinda laughed about it. Well, then they told us that we had to hire somebody, which, okay, whatever. And when it come to find out, the people that we hired, they said, we've never ever seen one of these ever break. The guy that even shut it off, even told them that he broke it. Well, they ended up calling, like, their insurance, the insurance adjuster came out, and they denied payment. And we're trying to seek some kinda help of maybe, you know, make them kind of reliable somewhat for it.
Like, we completely understand curb stop up is homeowner's responsibility, but how it, the whole situation went about and how it broke, it just, it was kind of like on him, like, he didn't care, kept wiggling and wiggling until it finally broke. In my opinion, if he couldn't get it, he should've stepped back, and like, hey, I can't get this, you gotta hire someone to do it, you know? Not just keep trying and trying till you break it.
The same day, they also broke the one down the street after they had to turn the water, because they had to shut all the water off. They had a, when they went to turn it back on, they even broke the one down the street.
They turned the water on too fast and blew the one down the street. And I got ahold of, uh, the city administrator or whatever, I talked to him personally, and he was like, yeah, I understand. He told me straight up that they would take care of it. And then he got, the insurance guy got ahold of me, and they pretty much denied me, telling me every reason in the book why it wasn't covered, which didn't make any sense to me. We're looking for help, if not help pay the bill or something, because I don't, I don't think we just had to pay it because it wasn't really our fault. Even the guy to cook said he's never seen one break like that in twenty years he's been doing this.
Alright, well, thank you, um, we'll do some digging and that, you have something else?
The crosswalk to the pool.
Okay.
Dangerous. I was walking there with my four-year-old, and we pushed the walk button, lights were flashing, the cars that were, the left of us stopped. We were like halfway through the crosswalk, and a car came, literally stopped this far from me. Of course, with my four-year-old, I'm banging on their hood, like, really? You can't see people who are in the crosswalk? Well, then I talked to my other two kids, they go to the pool by themselves, and they cross it pretty much daily. Most of the time, they have a crosswalk person there, but after five, I don't think they're there anymore. And they said it happens to them all the time. It even happened to us last year, where it was a business owner that actually, I was walking eight kids, little ones ages five and under, to the park, and a business owner went flying through the light, or the
The stop.
The stop. It's, I don't know if there's something that'd be done, like a stop, a four-way stop sign. I don't know, but nobody pays attention, and one kid's gonna get hurt, seriously hurt. I mean, even with like police presence there, I've seen many police officers, you know, kinda hiding out to see things happen, so I know police presence is there, but it's not helping.
Alright, well, we'll share that with the pool, do a minute, we did have to do something there with the crossing guards after everything.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback on that, and someone will get back to you this week.
I also have a copy of the bill to be cooked.
Okay. I'll, I'll put it in the
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night. Alright. Budget discussion. Nancy.
Yeah, hi, I'm gonna just kick off some of the budget discussion, and I know we've got some time to work on it, but I'm gonna review just a few things, as well as share some additional information with you tonight about where we might need to go with capital improvements. So hopefully you have a chance to look at it. We did include a lot of requests by department heads, so you'll see that first pass, it's almost seventeen percent levy increase. Well, we know that's not feasible, you know, that's not the direction we'll go in, but we also know that, um, by the time we get to the final levy, you will be where you want us to be. Absolute direction that you can give us with this is very helpful. But you need to consider whether or not that kind of percent increase is what you wanna list for even your preliminary levy, because whatever's adopted with the preliminary levy is what is reflected in those property tax notices that go out. We always tell everyone, it's likely not going to be that when it comes to final levy, but when they see it, it's kind of a shock. So, um, if you wanna think about the direction you wanna give us to work on, either now, um, until September twelfth, or by the time we send out the package, or even that night, you can say, well, we'd really like to have a certain percentage, so we can have the resolution reflect that, even if we don't have the fine details worked out by then. But in the meantime, in the meantime, I'm gonna just touch on a few things, some of which is included in there. Any one percent increase is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. A lot of the increase, or a portion out of the blocks of what the increase is, is just under five percent, and that reflects a lot of the contractual obligations that you have related to step increases and the wage adjustments, and that came out at the end of last year. So other assumptions related to the budget, as you may have noticed, looking at a twenty percent increase in health insurance, we hope it's not quite that much, we did get an original quote of twenty-nine percent, so even a twenty percent is an estimate, uh, but different insurance options are being considered at this time. So, uh, for right now, with this budget, we included a twenty percent increase. Utility rate increases suggested are four point five percent for water, one percent for storm, wastewater two percent. Local government yield is seeing not much of an increase, uh, due to some of the legislative activity last year. It was originally proposed a good twenty thousand, it was sold more than that, but because of, again, certain actions by legislature and the governor, it bounced back to a more preliminary number. With respect to expenditures, in the mayor council budget, we did include a possible ten thousand dollars for the community development block grant, and you know that some of those surveys are out there right now. Uh, in the police department, they're proposing a new patrol person to the tune of about seventy-seven thousand. I'll note that parry increased from sixteen point two percent to sixteen point nine five percent for police for two thousand nineteen, and then in two thousand twenty, it's going up to seventeen point seven percent increase. In planning and zoning, um, we reflected no payroll, but we added lighting kit services for thirty-five thousand. In the fire department, there was an increase to labor for fire calls of about ten thousand dollars, additional five thousand for turnout here, and some of that is related to the couple of new assistants that were hired, and then four thousand for training. In street, uh, there's being proposed a new street worker, so on the levy side, the street portion is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. The, um, twenty-five percent of deemed storms will show up in the storm enterprise fund. But the comments that I'm making now are primarily affecting that levy increase because enterprise funds don't hit the levy. Uh, in parks, as a result of those union contracts from a year ago, and it hadn't been adjusted because we'd already been looking at the, we already had the two thousand eighteen budget in place, there is an additional amount budgeted for on-call services for parks. At the cash and aquatic center, there's increases reflected in repairs and supplies because the pool is now five years old, and Ronnie's anticipating replacements of various pieces and parts, and as well as what we might be facing with repairs, and also in the utility bill increase. With the arena allocation, it's not in there, um, I didn't add it to the calculation, but we're looking at trying to put aside twenty-five thousand dollars for the new R-22. And the, um, I think it was in one of your previous packets, um, the consultant had suggested two hundred and twenty-five thousand over ten years to save up for it, so we're looking at billing the city for that every year, as well as the county, to actually put it aside and make sure that it's saved for that particular project when that time comes.
Okay, is that twenty-five thousand just the city's portion for ten years?
Nope, it'll be split. Yep, and that's the twelve-five, but that has to be worked in here, that's not in this numbers, because I didn't put in the calculation. Um, uh, overall, we're looking at capital increases, and I'm gonna talk about that in just a second, but just to summarize, with EVA, we did include payroll there as well, but we added CDA services, and the EVA had recommended twenty thousand for commercial programs as incentives for, um, our commercial businesses in town. So, um, any questions about some of those expenditures before I talk about capital? And I'll make this quick, because I realize this is a preliminary-type discussion, and the discussion should be yours. We'll have, uh, can I, we've got public works director here, Kent Burgess, the police chief, was scheduled to come as well, I'm not sure when he'll arrive, but he was to address the new position proposed for the police department, and then, um, the, um, cash and fire chief Joe Fitch was to be here to talk about, or to address any, or answer any questions you guys might have with respect to his capital items or any increase in his budget. So if you have any questions at this time, I do wanna say, anytime between now and the final levy, please stop by if you have questions, email us, we'll be happy to answer those questions, but also anytime during the year at all, please consider, you know, coming, meeting with us for any of, um, any questions you might have related to the budget or the levy. Okay, so when we do our annual planning, you all receive what we're calling kind of our twenty-year plan, where we list out a description of where the departments are at, along with a listing of all these capital items that the department heads need, and they're really trying to look forward into the future. While we're getting to the point where some of the needs are becoming more urgent with respect to equipment or mobile property, it's aging, and the older it gets, the more costly the repairs are going to be. But for public works and fire department in particular, trucks, vehicles, mobile property are large items, which means they also carry a large price tag, and we need to start considering some of that. So what I've done is, and again, we realize, um, this kind of levy increase won't fly for this year, I did take all of their requests, again, and look at just what affects the property tax levy, and look at all their requests and kinda schedule them all out over twenty years. I also considered, um, levies related to debt that might finance some of those things, and I'll talk about a few of those in a second. But then I also looked at what were, what we already include as in our budget that goes toward capital projects that are kind of, you know, projects come in and go out, and then we have some things that are kind of steady state. For example, we're to the point where we know that police cars, we need to start buying about one a year because they can only last about six years when they've got, right, about six cars, so we're to the point where that's kind of steady state. But, um, we consider what we have kind of built into the budget already, but over and above that, our needs for the next twenty years are on average about two hundred and seventy-five thousand additional dollars every year to be able to cover that. And that's what I've included in a spreadsheet for you, and I'm like, no, we're not gonna look at all of this, and we're not gonna look at all of those columns, so I'm gonna just summarize it, but I'm gonna give you each copy, and we'll talk about it, and then, um, and then we'll open it up for other discussions, and then public works director Charlie can come up and answer your questions as well. So if you want, just take one or pass it? Okay, I also have a few caveats, there might be errors, there might be omissions, I might have made mistakes with a few things. I know I don't have Ronnie's final numbers. They don't, the worksheets don't include, again, those set aside amounts we might already have built into the budget. For example, if we have a public works truck, year one, and, uh, year one of two, or year two of two, those are already in there. I did try and work up to that two hundred and seventy-five thousand to keep the levy down. I originally had a worksheet where it bounced right up to two seventy-five, but knowing that's not even going to be feasible, I worked with a different number to try and get there. Also, I definitely assume that the enterprise funds will take care of their own needs, and we're talking about property tax levy effects with these numbers only. There are a couple of pieces of equipment that are shared with enterprise funds, particularly the, um, streets with storm, um, but those storm portions aren't shared. Or if there's a piece of equipment that's shared with any of the other departments, for example, we might have a backhoe that's shared among the four enterprise funds and street, through parks. So I didn't include those. But, so if you look at your sheet, you'll see that all the sheets attached are by department, primarily, okay, so the big ticket items are primarily fire, streets, and park and rec, and you can look at that detail. Again, none of it should be too much of a surprise, because you get that at our annual planning session. We just try and tweak the numbers a little every year to, to stay up to date. Uh, if you look at the very front page, I've used colors just to denote how I made the calculations. Again, it's all spread over twenty years. Uh, the first section is pink, and those are straight up the capital needs. So all those sheets behind roll forward to the lines here, and that's the pink. Then anything that we might borrow money for also rolls forward and summarized on that first page, and that's the yellow. And examples of that are, um, uh, um, a fire chief, Fitch, has two very, very large trucks, eight hundred thousand dollars each, kind of right now, who knows what the cost will be in a few years. And there's no way we can set aside enough money to even save for that. So those might be things that we bond for, and that's reflected in the levies. Within this too, we also try and work in the street projects, again, the street portion only, because the enterprise funds will pay for their own, but we need to be able, as a city, to pay for those street projects, the street portion with our levies, and so I've included those in that yellow portion. Then in the orange section, um, I'm trying to recognize what we already kinda have to work with, the hundred and seventeen thousand, which we kinda use every year for some capital item within the city. But then we look at the debt drop-off. Now, we do have some debt dropping off, but we've already designated some of that in the short term to paying for the rest of our street projects. So you can see that's outlined in your budget under unallocated. But we're recognizing the rest of the debt levies that drop off, and some of those are going to be used to finance new street projects, so we've got a total there. So then we come down right below the orange to what the net levy increase required is, and, uh, working towards the targeted amount, I work with the timing of some of those projects. Now, that was something I did, it's totally arbitrary, although still trying to honor the request by the department heads, but trying to make it fit to each year, so that once we work our way up to that two hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's kind of a steady state. But it's that much additional amount that we, uh, we're looking forward to be included in the levy to help, um, finance these capital projects that we need that don't require bond debt. So the red arrow is our target, and the difference between our target and the net levy increase right above that are relatively smaller amounts. It's not an exact science, we're not gonna get it to the penny, because I wanted to use the dollar amount the department heads gave us, but you can see it's fairly steady state. But you can also see that, yeah, we're looking at trying to build it over about five years to get to that point. So, um, uh, last comment to make about this is that, um, it, note that it doesn't include other things that will require debt in some form or other, which will increase the levy. So, um, a public safety facility has been suggested to be shared with fire and police. Right now, it's ten million, who knows what it might be, but that's not built into this, this would, that would skew the numbers. We've always had on our list to look at a community center for the park and rec department. Again, an estimated ten million, there's a four-plex ball field for three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, if we ever add on to the library, what might that be? A new ladder truck, maybe in twenty years, which is another million. Highway fourteen interchange or trails and connections, other than a nominal mound, I think we have under parks and rec. Those aren't in here. But again, the whole point of this is just to give you an idea of, some of our needs are becoming more pressing and imminent. Necessarily next year, maybe not, but we're trying to put some money away by budgeting it over three years. And you've seen that in our budgets in, under capital, and on our enterprise funds, where it might be listed as one year, three, or whatever. But also know that staff will work with whatever direction we get from council, and, um, you know, whatever information you need to help you make better decisions, while some of that, our department heads will have that information too. So any questions with this, is, did it, is it fairly straightforward, without looking at every one of those twenty, uh, twenty years and line items detail?
Well, just, just to be realistic, the two seventy-five, shooting it out twenty years, you know, should be kind of like a cost of living, you know, it goes up, but if it's two hundred and seventy-five, sure isn't gonna buy in twenty years what it buys now.
Very true, but we just wanna get, I mean, have to start
I know, I understand where you're going with it, but
Yes, yes.
It's a good number for today, but it's
That's right. Yeah, we're, it's just to start the discussion, but also again, to bring home the point that, um, we're gonna need to start addressing some of these things.
No, it makes sense to me.
Okay, well, again, if any of you have any questions between now and the levy, as well as any direction you gave us tonight, or before the council packet for September twelfth, which is the night that we'll, you'll be adopting a preliminary levy, just let us know. And then, um, again, public works director Bradford is here, if you have any questions for him about the new position that's proposed, along with any capital items that you may have seen in the budget before the season, before I give you this, there's still some line items in there, so. Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Nancy, thanks.
Thank you. How's it going?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
So you meet another person?
So yeah, I'm, I'm here to ask for a full-time street worker, which is seventy-five percent street, twenty-five percent storm. Obviously don't affect the levy, but the seventy-five percent does, but for you guys, I think you all know, but we have two guys in the street, you know, and most of their jobs are two guys plus, you know, milling is blacktop. We're pulling four to five, sometimes six, depending on what we're, what we're doing. You know, snow plowing, obviously, we're, we're never gonna have enough guys to cover a street by itself, obviously, we can't have seven-man street department to plow the town, obviously, I understand that. But, but we're pulling these guys a lot of different directions, and, and they're constantly pulling people out of other departments to, to help us in the street, and, and sometimes it works out fine that, that they have time, and other times, not so good, that they're pushing off their jobs to help us because we're on a deadline for chip sealing, or, or whatever it is. The last two years chip sealing, we, we haven't made our, our
We maffed it all, me and Brandon maffed it all.
And we try to get all that patched before they come, and you, you never know when they're coming, they just kinda call you.
A week or two ahead and say
We're coming to town. In the last two years, we've had to reroute probably half the map, and, 'cause we haven't been done patching it, and we, then we take it, and we go try to find streets that are newer, in better shape, 'cause we don't have time to patch them before they get here, and then eventually, we're gonna run out of
Good streets that we should be doing more patches on to further chip sealing.
So, you know, the street takes care of the storm too. You know, just, just some of the things that, that they're doing right now, the two guys. So they, they mill, and they patch blacktop, they're patching potholes, sweeping streets, sign work, putting in signs, replacing signs. We gotta start a, a reflective sign thing for the league that we need to start replacing signs. Uh, all the events in town, the barricades, the sweeping of before, after, uh, the no parking signs, they put them up. Uh, they do all the flags, the flower pots, garbage every Friday on Main Street, uh, mowing, trimming, spraying. They're, when we're mowing with the weather early in the spring, things like that, they're mowing
Two days, every week, two guys for the street.
They're mowing fire hall, police department, from, along the railroad, all the way from basically the Legion all the way down to the East Park. They mow all that along the railroad. They mow the, the ditch along the gun club, the park and ride, uh, the ditch across from the cemetery, so they're, they're covering a lot of ground for, for two guys, plus the storm side, which we'll touch on here, but they're painting streets, which we haven't started yet, uh, and we're running out of time, so next week we got to be crosswalks by the schools and the library, and down by, and the old library. They're grading hauling rock on Sixteenth Street, and, you know, following sand and equipment maintenance, tree work. And on the storm side, we got to cleaning the catch basin, which we haven't done any. Fixing catch basins, we've had a couple sub drains now where we're full of ruts. Back when we first started doing the sub drain behind the curve, they used the farm tile, and the trees in the boulevard are throwing into them and causing problems. Up on Thirteenth, we fixed one, and now we got one right across the road. And then, uh, they take care of the ponds too, mowing the ponds, basically, when we can, or when people complain. You know, we got some work in Marty's, we need to care about trees and cast and metals, we got sediment from the, the catch basin that's running in there, we need to get We need to get dug out of there for the drain. There's ten storm ponds.
More than that.
Plus, and Brandon, he likes giving us some, you know, every development. So that's only going to get more and, you know, milling is dictated by the weather. If it's raining, we can't be taking the road down to the gravel and the other department's schedules, so. And then on the equipment side, the dump truck is a two thousand and three, and the other one is two thousand and seven. So we're looking at, you know, fifteen years old right now. And then if we do it three years, it'll be eighteen years old. The oldest loader is an oh eight. And with the, you know, we're budgeting for the sweeper already. I know you guys got a levy you want, and we got to try to do what we got to do. There's plenty of options with that. We can extend years on things as far as the budget or say we want to do, let's get this one or these two first and then work on another one.
We want a little more local for a sweeper.
And you know what the prices of that? It changes every year with the market and the inflation. You know, basically the same loader we got right now, I got a quote, is a hundred and eighty thousand. And, you know, not that we have to get a case, when we do it, obviously then we'll get prices and bids when we get closer. But he says in four to five years, probably a seven percent inflation, so a hundred and ninety-five thousand. But like he said, based on the economy staying good, you know, you don't know. I've worked on both ends, where we drill things into the ground and we replace loaders every two or three years we work for a while. And the pickups, you know, it's. The older gets the more problems you have and more breakdowns. I think the other two or three, three years maybe, like on the pickups, was to assume you barely got used in one and it was going down the road, so.
Have you looked at the leasing, like the county?
As far as.
Vehicles? Pickups?
No.
Because I was just chatting with them a little bit, they can lease up to three, two to three squads, you know, plus the other department. For the same price that they can buy one. So every year they're getting, they can replace three squads as a dealer, they're buying one.
And the way I understand it, the more vehicles they can get in the program, the cheaper it gets.
And then they're turning them around and selling them, their goals directly in five years, and they can actually sell them for more than their worth.
Just an idea.
Right. I guess, I guess the only thing I'd be concerned on in the leasing of the pickups is we're throwing generators and water keys. And I don't, you know, as far as you're going to get scratches and dings on them and.
Plus with the county, they're putting up twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year on the second basis.
But they're looking at all departments, even the maintenance, and they don't get that many miles on the maintenance trucks.
They're worried about upkeep, it's gussible.
Right.
Right.
Might be just something to talk to the county about.
Right.
Maybe it's a dead-end deal, but it's an option.
I did talk to Case about, you know, leasing a loader, and he said that their lease program with a loader hasn't went well. Now, the graders, on the other hand, is a lot, been a lot more successful because people don't need them graders in the summer than they do in the winter. You know, like the sweeper, there's how many miles and how big and.
Well, cap will.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of options. So when we get closer to purchasing anything, obviously, we got to do our homework and decide what exactly we want to spend or what kind of deal on.
So back to adding a person, if you had a full-time person, does that eliminate any part-time? You need the full-time person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I got a question on that, pretty much on this position, is you only mentioned that your summer, what you covered, you need somebody for is for summer.
Yeah.
What is this person going to do in the winter if you've got streets, law and people covered?
Well, he would, well, snow.
Well, I understand that, I mean, but I mean, just one of those things. Part-time pad fill in the summer or are we looking for, what are we going to do with them in the winter?
Well, he would definitely be in a fall.
Plus repairs.
Being in the street.
Right.
They take presidents over the other.
But we have that covered now?
At times, yes. Other times, we've had a fall set before.
You're always going to have that.
Right. Depending on, you know, the weekend is always tough, yeah.
Problem I see with a part-time person, you're never going to get a good, reliable person. If you have somebody hired full-time, they're there to stay. And part-time help is part-time help.
And I know we went away from the five-month part-time people because of unemployment. And the seasonal, like the carousel that we had, he was here for about two and a half months. And tree work, street guys do trees. When they're not doing snow, they're doing trees and fixing equipment.
All in action, it's going to be one of them later, too. One in drive.
It's already getting cold. It's already getting cold sometimes, it seems like.
We had, we had orders this day today. We never eat it here.
All right, any other questions, Charlie?
On the equipment that you talked about, so I see it anything, you've been around the equipment, but you're almost full life out there. You start to see like some of the stuff slowly leak starting, rear ends like concealed, I mean oil dripping.
The one, the older loader, where the rear end is starting to leak, we then look at it.
I mean, it just kind of, I mean, I use the equipment, I know, you know, you start seeing the signs. I guess until you start seeing the signs, granted, I don't want to sit there all some marching and say, no, September's a decent thing to part, you know.
Right.
You know, North Scrambling, I don't want that either, but I'd like to, you know, a little more come back and say, you know, this one's starting, there's starting to place hoses on this. And once one hose goes, the rest are going. Then you get to that nickel and dime, I don't think we want to be at that very guard, you know, nickel and dime.
Right.
A little bit more preemptive information, say, this one's, you know, next year or two.
Right. Okay.
How about on them trucks, one to three and one to seven? So the three's got a lot less emission on it. I mean, comparable, what's the difference in the mileage of them? Are they pretty?
I didn't even look at the seven. The threes got thirty, thirty-six thousand, seven or thirty-nine miles. The seven might have more because we, we get blacktop all the time, you know.
That's what I mean, you can't find them, you can't buy them as durable as they were.
Right.
Right.
And with options, obviously, than the next dump truck, I would prefer to get an underbody and a sander on it. Our old sander, we actually put a bunch of money in that last year just to pass the DOT inspection, put it on the road, so. There's not a lot of life in that. Rebuilt the underneath and fixed a bunch of things, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he's our only guest.
Okay. So Nancy, just a clarification, you were saying at the beginning, I was trying to write down quickly as you were talking.
No, it's all right.
So if we take the budget with no other increases except for our contractual obligations, the lane steps and that stuff, from the, what increase?
Well, so I made a calculation, it's got two employees as well as those capital items that, so Public Works and the Fire Department, it was right about five.
So is there a way to find out, you know, with two thousand and eighteen, what we spent on that, what the increase would be, or just the contractual? Because there's some other things in the budget besides.
In dollars or, I'm not sure what.
Dollars or percent, I can make the dollars a percent.
Well, actually, that five percent is mostly contractual. You know, there's some given case, but yes, I think it's just the payroll-related increase.
Okay, that would be helpful for me. All right, any other comments on the budget? We have to come back on September twelfth and approve a preliminary, go on the proposed property tax statements in December. Feel free to get Nancy anytime, it's all in three weeks.
Yep.
It's going to take three weeks from today. Any thoughts on those that or discussion you want to have right now? Is there any, every year, and I've asked this before, I was on council, I asked it last year, I'll probably just throw out again this year, every year, by the time we hear of all the things we need next year, was there any consideration from anybody about anything that can be cut? Or savings or?
No, no one proposing any of this, I think.
So all right, so then hearing none, I guess, you know, if somebody else has anything. But personally, the sixteen percent thing is not going to fly, right? I can't speak for Bill, it's up here, but with me, that's not going to fly. I had a number in my head before I came into it of about five percent, so. That's why I wanted that number with the contractual obligations. But that's just my opinion, I understand it was eight percent, two, three, four, five years, I don't know, whatever it was. And things happen, we're a growing city, and we have things to pay for. But that was just off my top, my head, I had my head going into it, so we got a lot of things to consider in the next few weeks, so.
So you got to feel that we're coming off of zero, I mean.
Right.
We can't keep it at zero forever.
I said, you got to feel good, like if you did that.
What about this twenty grand the EDA is proposing to for business improvements, parking, whatever.
For incentive.
Yeah, and that's where, I think we need a little bit more from the EDA, too, because I'm on EDA, and we talked about that. Because I think at that meeting, we talked about there was possibilities of some of transfers from enterprise funds that all would hit the levy. So I don't think that would have affected us at all.
No. I think we added that actually to the revenue side. Oh, did we? I thought we did for electric, right?
Yeah, because there were some of the other funds that we've looked at that were headed where they, on the calculations, where they weren't behind there. So we were going to use that, transfers to that, and I hit the levy with that increase if we had to.
I mean, is there a proposal of what to use the money for, what to qualify for, what's it going to return to the city?
But that's all being worked on right now.
Yeah, they have another meeting in two weeks.
The first, we'll have a meeting before.
Before the council.
The council meeting, before the council.
I mean, that was one kind of, you know, I mean, we need more commercial business in this town, point one, you know, so. If it's for only helping the existing businesses in here, what are we looking at, what do they need help with?
Right, and that's what's being formulated right now. We'll have managers at the next council meeting as far as what.
Looking at samples of things from other cities, some ideas that just came from the members from the larger discussions, so.
Yeah, so that'll be at the next council meeting from the EDA. So we've got probably four or five programs that we're looking at. And we're basically stealing them from other communities locally. So, I mean, they look like good programs for other communities, and some of them, we actually have opportunities if we start the program and have some monies available. It doesn't have to be a lot, we can actually call up by a person grants or some matching funds from other organizations that would do that. So I think it'll be some decent stuff that we'll bring to the council after the next EDA meeting.
All right, anybody else? Okay, move on, thanks, Charlie.
Old Business, five oh six Fifteenth Avenue Northwest.
Yes, so that was the garage that one of the neighbors came to talk about. So Jay Krueger, I'm the property owner, and the fellow who's helping him build the building, came and met on Monday. And Jay walked through with them what was on their building permit application and how to meet the sixteen-foot maximum height, which would be from the finished grade to the midpoint between the bottom of the rafter and the ridge. I got that right?
Yep.
Yes. So Jay sat with them and they came up with a plan, so they have two courses of block. They are going to bring the finished grade up to the two courses of block, which will take care, they were twenty-two inches too tall. That will take care of sixteen inches. And then my understanding is that they will adjust where the rafters fit on the wall so that their midpoint does meet the sixteen-foot requirement. So they left, and Jay left satisfied that they, that he would be able to sign on it, and they would be able to meet that height restriction.
So where did the sixteen foot come in? Is that?
It's in our limits.
Like how height this defines?
The maximum height is defined by height from detached structure from the base of the finished grade to the midpoint of your.
That's how it's in our.
Yeah, that's as definition of how high it can be unattached, that's what it spells it right out in the sentence.
Broken down by what kind of roof.
Even I understood it.
So that, that actually, okay, so it has nothing to do with the main structure on that lot, then you mean? He could have something, if he had a rambler there, he could still have something that was sixteen-foot, so that's interesting.
We do not have a requirement that the accessory building cannot exceed the height of the primary structure, that is not.
As long as it's one story.
One story.
One story. Right. So it doesn't have a room in it. And it's defined by the type of roof that goes on it. And I'm not going to go, I can't even remember the mansford roof or whatever, some of the other things, right, I had to Google that to see what that was. But actually, actually, I have one. The flat roof that they brought on, so I actually learned what that was. But yeah, that's defined in our ordinance pretty much black and white.
One fifty-four point zero five three, if you want it.
So the two courses of block.
Will now be below grade.
That's all the way around.
It's just, majority was on the north side, though.
Okay, east, north?
Northeast, yeah. South side is almost to the grade up to the front.
All right, so they're going to take care of that and, so the structure wasn't fifty-nine and a half at all? Just for the record.
Not that I'm aware of.
I was just like, holy cow, we got to stop something.
All right, thank you, and we'll take care of that. Administrator's report.
Do I have to some?
Some cat energy.
Yep, so this is the energy assistance program. We participate in this every year. We do have customers who take advantage of it as part of their cold weather arrangements. They also work with some cats.
Do we need a motion or suspension?
I do need a motion. I do need a motion. The part of the page, um, look here.
Okay, I want to obtain a motion to participate in the CAC cold energy program.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Oh, sir.
Thanks Lonny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that's secured unanimously. Okay, personnel, hire wastewater, wastewater operator.
Yep, yep, so, um. There were interviews, um, done, um, the first candidate did, um, not take the position that was, um, that was offered. So, um, we've reached out to Caleb Fisher, he, uh, could start immediately upon completion of his, um, background checks and physicals. And he would start at grade eight, step one, which is twenty-two oh seven an hour.
How many candidates were there?
Um, there were four who scored eighty, were the four that scored eighty points, there were four that scored eighty points. Um, one that scored fifty points and two that I did not score because they had no education or experience beyond high school. Um, of the four that scored eighty points, um, one of them had already taken another position. Um, one of them did not respond to our calls and the other two came down and interviewed last week. The first choice candidate, um, has selected not to relocate, um, to CAFs, and the second candidate, um, has indicated that he has family in the area and could start new.
So did I follow right, just like the fourth person down blind or?
No, no, this would have been the. Of the four that scored eighty points, only two chose to interview with us. So we don't know about the other two, we didn't talk to them, we don't know if they would have been first or second or third or fourth choice if we only interviewed two.
So this is second out of two?
The second out of the two that interviewed.
Can I ask Charlie a question?
Yeah.
Are you good with it? Did you see?
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I used, uh. The, the first guy we prefer has.
A couple of years of experience. We, we support him basically all of the programs.
Where, where this, this guy here is press on school, uh, D water, D sewer license, uh, like degree in water, so, so that program. So he's only had some internships yet.
Had a job.
Twenty years. To teach the airway.
Are you good with it?
Yeah.
So the pay entry, is that reflective of his experience? Pay scale?
That's about a top description.
Right.
Yeah, that's the most.
Water wastewater operator, the sixth grade eight position, and step one would be the first step.
Any other questions? If Charlie's good with it, I'm good with it, so I'll, I'll make the motion to accept, uh, approve the hire of wastewater, water operator.
Oh, seconded.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same side?
Go which way? Said I.
Four, yeah.
Oh, no, four, four, okay, all right.
That's unanimously, five out of.
I didn't hear the second part, so.
Okay.
Sorry, I just feel too, uh.
Can I ask Charlie a question?
Sure.
Charlie, do you know what they broke on the skirt stop? Or what was broke? Just the top?
On the bottom, down even there, but.
Right.
All you can get hold of.
Top key thing.
The shutter.
Broke off, yeah.
Yep, okay. We broke those off before.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so you can get hold of it.
Yeah, I know.
You can't see it if you're on the side of it, you don't.
Okay, we're gonna close the meeting for litigation strategy regarding assessment appeals, and then we'll reopen the meeting.
One of that stuff.
Thanks Charlie.
Uh, Melanie. Off, we're off for litigation. Thank you.